Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Calling to order the Borough of Saraville Planning Board Meeting for April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Beth, has this meeting been advertised in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act?
Yes, Chairman, it has.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Allegra, Mr. Blamar, Mr. Bolton, Mr. Buchanan, Councilman O'Noha, Ms. Palowski,
here.
Mr. Spazato, Chairman Muller.
Here.
Mr. Cornell, Mr. Fowler, Mr. Barlow. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Beth. Memorialization resolutions?
None this evening?
Any minutes?
Nope, no.
Anything on the communication agenda?
None.
Any site plans, subdivisions?
None this evening.
Old business, new business, administrative matters?
This evening, we have Higher Grul to discuss the review of the draft master plan reexamination report.
Okay. Can we proceed with that, please? Please step forward. Good evening.
For those of you that don't know me, some of you do, my name is Susan Grul. I'm one of the principals of Higher Grul and Associates, and we are a consulting planning firm that was retained to prepare the reexamination report. We are also serve as the Borough planners. And we're very familiar with the community, so it's nice to be here. And I just want to introduce Amanda Lear, who is an associate planner with our firm and was very actively involved in helping with the preparation of this. So I'll be, I'll be very short.
Okay, so what we're going to do is we're going to hear your presentation. We'll address any questions that the board has, and then I'm going to open it up to the public for any questions or comments that they have. So that's where I will proceed, okay?
That's right.
Okay.
Sounds like a plan, good plan. So I'll just briefly just go through what this is, so that you understand what it is and what it isn't. And we're going to be back for the next phase of this, this planning project. So every, your last master plan was adopted in two thousand and thirteen. That was a comprehensive master plan that was prepared. According to the municipal land use law, you have to review your master plan every ten years. And that review is basically saying, well, what's happened since two thousand and thirteen? Have there been changes? What have you done in terms of addressing your goals and objectives? And now here we are, it's not only local, but what's happened in the state, which we know a lot has happened in the state since two thousand and thirteen? And how has that affected what the, you know, community wants to do? What Saraville wants to do. And then at the end of this is, okay, now you've reviewed this, what are the recommendations? Should there be a new zoning ordinance? Should there be a land use plan element? Should there be other master plan elements that are updated? And then the last piece is the redevelopment. If there's any recommendations as it relates to other redevelopment areas, and certainly the Saraville is very familiar with the redevelopment statute, and it has a number of redevelopment plans, which we've identified in here. So that's what this does. What it doesn't do is it is not a land use plan element of the master plan. It goes, does not go into extensive detail about proposed recommended rezoning, what the existing land use, the mapping that you would use to determine what that is, propose, a new proposed zoning map. And let's just, I just want to make sure that most of you know, but the, the reexam and the master plan are policy documents. They are not regulatory. That is implemented through zoning. And that is a governing body responsibility. Obviously, you have input and it's referred to you, but that is the law versus the policy. And ideally, there, they match. Sometimes they don't. But ideally, they do. And so I just want to make sure that that's kind of an overview of what we're doing here, what we're not doing here. And ultimately, there will be a zoning ordinance, comprehensive zoning ordinance change with a zoning map that will ultimately come back to you for you to review and determine whether it's consistent with your master plan and particularly the land use plan element or not, and any recommendations you have. But I'm just, that's forward, that's future. So what we've tried to do is identify as much as we could as to what has happened since two thousand and thirteen. And we are, we look forward to your, any comments, questions, or suggestions that we should add or modify, because you know your community. And so that's why we're here, the hearing ideally, you're the one that determines that, but ideally would be next month. And, but we thought it was important to come here this month in an informal setting to make sure that we have it right enough move forward. So, Mr. Chairman, if that kind of gives you the overview. We do have a couple of suggested changes based upon your tax assessor's suggestion. Amanda, do you want to just kind of come up and just make, they're very minor at this point. He's been working on this. Most of his comments relate to the next phase, which again is the land use plan element, and we will start to work on that as soon as this reexam is.
Thanks, Beth.
Susan, nothing to interrupt you from. Just so we're clear, the, the master plan reexamination and the land use plan, those are the next two documents that the board is going to have to vote on, correct?
Yes.
And then after that, there will be the zoning ordinances being drafted and a new zoning map, correct? Correct?
Yes, that should be the way that it's done, and any recommended zoning changes that are identified in the land use plan element should be incorporated into the zoning ordinance changes.
And who drafts the ordinance and, and the map? Is that you?
Normally, we do that.
Okay, and do we?
Actually, we have been involved in that.
Do you, do we review them before they go to the council?
No.
They go to the council first?
They go to the council. At least, that's the way, that's the way, I think that's the way it's done here. It depends, you can do it the other way, but they have to introduce and adopt.
Okay, and then once the council approves them, we review them for consistency between the master plan and the land use plan?
That's, yes, that is correct.
And if we have?
To make any other comments that you may have.
And if we have any recommendations or comments, we send them back to the council?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and then they determine ultimately whether they want to make the changes or not. And then there's a whole process based upon that, but there's a public hearing associated with that as well. So it's not as though it just kind of goes up there and then the public doesn't have an opportunity.
Okay, I just wanted to be, you know, straight with the process.
Thank you.
I know you explained it, but I just wanted to compartmentalize.
It's always good to hear it. It's always good to hear it as many times as, just so everybody understands.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And just a couple, Amanda, if you, you've got that, okay.
So one of the first changes, if you want to look at, is going to be on page twenty-four when we're discussing the open space and recreation plan by the county. Like you said, these are in response to comments that we received from the Borough Tax Assessor. So at the end of that paragraph, we want to add the sentence referring to the last property there, that's the forty-two acre privately owned property that we already mentioned, writing that this property is also identified as a priority acquisition area in Saraville's two thousand and sixteen open space and recreation plan, in which the Borough endorses working alongside the county in acquiring open space, just referencing that this is also identified by Saraville already, and that the Borough wants to work alongside the county when it comes to acquiring open space. Then, the next change has to do with Blue Acres Program, which is on page twenty-eight. All you've done there is, on the second and last sentence, we have written more than one hundred homes. We're simply updating that number to more than one hundred and forty-nine homes. That's just an updated figure to give a better understanding, how many homes have been assisted by the Blue Acres Program so far. Most of the other comments we receive, like Susan said, are going to be addressed at the later stages in the land use plan element. They have to do with some of the statistics that we've included and also comments on the two thousand and thirteen master plan. So we will take those into account while doing the land use plan element, but they're just not going to be included right now in the reexam. But that's all we've updated right now.
Thank you, Amanda.
Of course.
Thank you. So I know it's riveting reading material. Great bedtime reading, but.
Does anyone from the, the board have any questions, comments? I'll, I'll start out with a few, if you don't mind.
Great.
So in this master plan reexamination, I didn't see any discussion regarding certain uses that we want to phase out in the borough. Adult businesses, I know we've already addressed, or the councils already addressed, the vape shop issues. Is that, is that going to be forthcoming in the final draft of the master plan or in the land use plan?
In the land use plan element.
And just briefly, what, the difference between the master plan and the land use plan element?
The, the reexamination report is essentially, it is not used, or it shouldn't be used technically as a rezoning document. Okay, it is really to look and see and evaluate whether, what has changed. Okay, and whether in fact there are elements of the master plan or the ordinance that should be changed, whether there should be a change. Because we've been retained to do the land use plan element as the next phase, we, we thought it was much more appropriate to address those types of issues, because those are really the land use plan element issues. Then, in this, and it gets a little messy then, because where do you stop? Where do you do this? Where do you do that? Where we know that those issues will be addressed in the land use plan element. I should note that the EV, the electric vehicle charging stations are also something that we addressed in here, because it's a statewide legislative type of regulation, and that we suggested that the Borough revise its ordinances to include that as well. So I just want to note that, because that was an addition to what needed to be looked at.
Okay, so that land use plan will be, a draft of that will be prepared after the master plan is approved?
Correct.
And that will address some of the uses that we want to phase out of the borough?
It will address any use you recommend that you want to do.
Okay.
Okay, so that will be a much more extensive assessment of the land use issues.
Susan, I had a question. Just, how does the communication work? We're doing the master plan, but you're talking about ordinance needing to get changed. Are we relying on the council to read this, or is it something that your office would then make recommendations to the borough?
There are, there are no changes to the ordinance related to this.
No, I'm, I was speaking, the one you talked about, electric vehicles, like the electric vehicle one.
Ultimately, well, they should get a document, they should get a copy of this, as well as the land use plan element. It's really where they need to know and should have input, because you have at least one member and the designee of the mayor, but not one member of the council on the board, so that there's some communication. Oh, I, there's technically. I'm, I'm sorry, but supposedly, there's supposed to be communication, whether it's from membership and the, to membership kind of coordination, or just this board relaying this information to the governing body. Yes.
So Susan, I, I know that there was an emphasis in this reexamination, rightfully so regarding EV, electrical sources, you know, consistent with the state's initiatives. Has there, was there any evaluation and for people who were here during Superstorm Sandy? I lost power for ten days. I think I lost power for five days after East Ais. People in President Park area, we lose our power a lot, and I'm not sure why. I don't know if it's linked to a substation in South Amboy. I, I don't know what the reason is. If we're going to start promoting electric, electric cars, electricity, that's the, the one power source we're going to be promoting. Was there any evaluation as to whether Saraville could have its own power authority similar to, I think, Milltown and other neighboring towns? You know, we don't have to be so reliant on JCP and L, because I know it could take days for JCP and L to come out and fix things, whereas neighboring municipalities have their own in-house power, you know, utility or authority?
Well, as part of the land use plan element, there now is a requirement to do a sustainability, resiliency sub-element in that, in the land use plan element. And Amanda, I don't know whether you want to just summarize what that includes, because Amanda's well aware, but that's where I think it would come up.
Yeah, so when we do the hazard vulnerability assessment, we start by just looking at what hazards exist in the municipality. Should it happen hurricanes, winter storms, earthquakes, that sort of thing? And then look at evaluating that in terms of how that impacts the borough, and then what strategies the borough can take to address them. So oftentimes, we come to recommendations potentially around electricity, things like resilience hubs that try and put power in central areas and almost use as a resource during these events. So we can evaluate sustainability within that context in these hazards. So that would be where that would come into more focus.
Land use plan?
Yeah, so it's the, the sub-element of that.
Now, how about potentially solar fields? In other words, having a backup system of solar in the, because if we're going to put all our eggs in the electricity basket with the vulnerabilities in the grid, the problems in the town, is there any thought to a, a backup energy source? You know, I, because, because Generax, and I don't feel that residents should have to go out and buy Generax for their house. And that's what people are doing. It's an added tax, depending upon where you live in this borough, that you know you're going to lose your electricity, and you better have a Generac system, because whatever happens with the grid, the electrical lines, the gas, the natural gas will keep flowing. And it, it, it pains me to see that people have to make that investment to live in certain areas of the borough. Can we address potential solutions to that?
These are all things that we want noted, that we will look into them at that time and get your input and other input into that, to take that into consideration and try to address it.
Okay. I'm just looking through my notes.
By the way, I just want to note that both Mike and Jay were very helpful. We worked with them and they helped looked at it, to give their input, because we worked as a team on that, so I just want to note that and thank them both for that.
They're, they're, they're the best.
I know, I know.
So one of the issues that comes up a lot that we hear, traffic congestion. I don't know if there's any effective way to deal with it. We've, we have a developing borough, we've put up a lot of units lately. There's a lot of projects that were implemented as a result of lawsuits against the borough, redevelopment, et cetera. Is there traffic solutions? Is that addressed in the land use plan, or to the extent there, there is a solution to, to some of them?
Well, interesting you would raise that. We have as one of the recommendations to do a updated circulation plan. That's on page thirty-one. So as, as, in addition to the updated land use plan element, we also recommended a new circulation plan be prepared that would address traffic, pedestrian, bike, the whole gamut that goes under circulation.
And are you aware of the traffic, problem, problem areas in the borough?
I, well, yeah, pretty much. It's probably gotten worse since I really knew what everything was.
Okay, I mean, some of the ones that I know, you know, obviously Washington Road and Main Street, Boardent Town in Ernston, Cheesequake in Boardent Town is going to be a hotspot soon, once we get, you know, the, the warehouses and then the school depot with the buses. So I'm just looking at some of the, and I don't know if there's any potential solutions, but we would like you to take a look at those to see what could be done, if anything. I know that there was something in there about having bike lanes and bike travel in the borough. And I don't know if you've done an evaluation of that.
Yeah.
And, and I don't, to be honest, I, I, I think you, I, I think you might, you might have a death wish if you're going to be taking a bike around the borough here. It's, it's dangerous enough. I don't let my kids drive, you know, ride their bikes any amount of distance, because people are texting, there's not a lot of sidewalks either where you can, you can do that, and, but are, are you also evaluating sidewalks? I know one of the issues, and it can't, I don't know if it can be corrected. Like, for instance, you go up to Laurel Park. A lot of people are cutting through Laurel Park, because the traffic on Ernston and Boardent Town and Cheese, it's just too, it's too rough to go the conventional route, so they'll cut through, they'll cut through Laurel Park. I don't know if you're familiar with Laurel Park and the park. So Laurel Park, there's no sidewalks. And most people don't use their driveway to park their cars, so the cars are all on the street. There's no sidewalks, and there's not a lot of streetlights. So, and people are out walking, they're walking their kids, walking their dogs, and then you have a lot of traffic that's bolting up Laurel, Laurel Park. And it's just a matter of time, unfortunately. There's nothing that can be done to install sidewalks in those areas. All we can do is say, all right, any new development has to have sidewalk, correct?
It depends. It depends on whether the borough wants to proactively set up something to fill in the gas sites, do a capital budget to deal with that. You know, that's, that's money. And that's something that the borough has to determine, and maybe they want to. I, I don't know. But your points are well taken. I get it.
How about the conservation aspect? We've got, I mean, there's a lot of development, there were a lot of, lot of trees that were taken down recently with some recent development. I think we have some upcoming development on Cheesequake that's going to take down a lot more trees. Is there any, other than open, open space, is there anything? Is, does that factor in at all to the evaluation?
Well, yes, kind of. It would probably go into more into the zoning code or the land use code. And there's already some information in your ordinance that talks about trees and eliminating them, and then if you, and replacement and, and all that. So there are, there are things right now that are in your code. It's a question of evaluating that. Is there a way to strengthen that, to modify it? I, I don't know the answer to that.
Mention redevelopment, are you looking for, are you identifying additional areas for redevelopment, or are you just noting the ones that are already in existence?
We have only noted the ones that are in existence. Certainly, there are other ones that would be recommended, we put those in. At least that we reexamined and have any recommendations for new. But certainly, if you have any suggestions, we can put it in. Now, obviously, it's a recommendation, and then the governing body would have to, you know, determine whether they want to pursue that or not.
I think you mentioned the design standards, the lighting standards for residential, commercial, and industrial zones. Are you evaluating the current lighting standards?
We would, we suggest that those be considered when you look at your ordinance. Those need to be updated, reevaluated. Yes, not now, but in the future.
Anyone else have any comments, questions, issues on the board? Do I need a motion to open to the public? Or a motion to open? Susan, thank you. We're going to take a motion to open to the public, so we can hear and address the comments.
Thank you for your comments.
Is there a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Anyone from the public? Step up, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Ken Robinson. I live at eleven Ross Square in Harlan.
Welcome, Chair.
Thank you very much. I served on this board for about twenty years, sixteen as chairman, and was through one full-blown master plan and at least one reexamination. It's been a long time since I've done this. I only saw this this evening. So I made some notes a little earlier this evening before I came, and so some of the things, because I don't come here often, some of my comments might go a little bit beyond the master plan and might talk about the land use plan and maybe about the zoning. And I hope you'll, you'll give me a, a little bit of leeway. And, but before I talk about that, I would like to compliment you, Mr. Chairman, on, on almost all the things you said, but two in particular I, I want to single out. You talked about generating stations. We have, I think we have four in the town. We have the JCP and L, we have Neptune, we have Red Oak, we have O'Brien. If I missed one, Jay can, do we have four or five?
Neptune, O'Brien, Red Oak, and New Jersey Power.
So.
New York Treasury.
Four or five?
There was one that was talked about, but that.
Yes, okay. When those were approved, we didn't think about what you were talking about and the concept of host benefits to a community. For generation, that's a lot of plants to have in a town. One of them, JCP and L, was responsible for their grocery receipts and franchise tax, kept our tax rate low for a long time, so that was wonderful. The others had different operations, but we never thought about the idea of a host benefit. At one point in time, when O'Brien is being built, we talked about whether or not steam could be used to heat the junior high or even the senior citizen place across the street. That never went further than discussion, but maybe, maybe there can be some kind of host benefits that would allow, you know, people to charge up and things like that, if there is an outage. So I thought your comments were, were excellent. I want to say this, I envy you for what you're doing now. I served, as I said, for a long time. The best thing a board can do is the master plan. It is the most fun thing, it's the most exciting thing, and And it is the most important job that you do. Your dreams can become reality. Your vision can take form. And and you really make a difference there. And I compliment the board for the transparency and, of course, the planning firm. You have a great planning firm. I have the highest respect for this firm, was happy to be involved with their coming to town. Um, when I used to speak at sessions for the league municipalities, I used to tell them there is a reason you're called a planning board and not an approval board. Because a lot of people think the most important thing you do is vote on applications. That's not the most important thing you do at all. In fact, the proof of that is if a conforming application comes before the board and you do absolutely nothing in a period of time, they get automatic approval. So what your job is, is to construct a master plan and have input into the land use plan and the zoning ordinance that makes sure that when something comes before you, you're happy with it, if it conforms, if it meets what you've done, and there should be no problem. So what you, this aspect of your job is really the most important thing. And it's it's a shame, really, that you you only get to do it every two years. And what I used to tell the board, and we went through this before, is you should ask yourself this. What do you want Saro to be known for? And once you come up with that, you should work towards that. Do you want to be be known for its forests, its certain spaces, its professional offices, its elder care facilities, its great restaurants, your recreation facilities, cultural centers, whatever that is, you should work towards that. That's that's where you get to put your fingerprint on on what you do. And I and I used to tell folks all the time, just look at, in the in the preamble to the land use law, I think it's A through O, maybe, and lists what you do. If you do those things, you should be in, you should be in good stead. And I will tell you this, Susan talked about um the importance of the master plan and the zoning ordinance being substantially consistent. Now, I don't think any of you folks who are here, Jay, you were here as a professional, not as a member of the board. When we went through the litigation with the Mako property on Main Street that ultimately resulted in um one point eight million square feet of warehousing that will be built, that suit, that suit cost the town more than one point five million dollars in legal fees, and we lost that suit. And one of the things that the judge said, in addition to uh calling the hearing a sham, he pointed out that the master plan and the zoning ordinance were not substantially consistent. And that's one of the reasons that that we lost that suit. And I'll tell you, as an aside, when we were talking about settling that suit, one of the plans that Mr. Mako had was to do a golf course there surrounded by some high-end senior facilities. Unfortunately, the then mayor, Mr. O'Brien, didn't support that, so we didn't do that. Uh, but that would have been a good thing, I think. Now, what I wanted to talk about was this. And some of these things, I glanced at this very quickly. It's excellent. It's everything that this planning firm does is. So some of these things you might have touched on, some of the things Susan touched on. You mentioned some of these things, Mr. Chairman. But when I made my notes this afternoon, some of the things I thought we ought to be talking about and some, as I said, we'll go into the land use plan and touch maybe even on the zoning ordinance, but things that I think that we have to do if we're reexamining is we have to look at those areas that were impacted by Sandy and other storms like that and see what we have done or need to do to make sure that what existed there won't exist there in the future. I think we have to take a look at the need for elder care and childcare. You know, years ago, we had a proposal that never got off the ground because it was proposed by somebody who had a a childcare facility. That if you have a housing development of certain amount of units, that you should have an onsite childcare. I thought then it made a lot of sense. Some towns adopted that. We didn't do that. Um, and that was twenty, twenty-five years ago, the 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 need for childcare and elder care. Because I've noticed, most of us are getting older, the need for those things is is even more evident now than it was. There's been stories in the news lately about work libuums. I mean, especially since COVID. Um, we've all seen the need for that. And years ago, I don't, nobody, I don't think anybody up here is as old as I am. So nobody will know what I'm talking about when I say the Donna Reed Show. Doctors, oh, okay, all right. That's the Donna Reed Show. Dr. Jeff Stone had an office in the house. And it wasn't built as a house and converted to an office because we've seen those. We have those on Ernston Road. Some places, they don't really work as well as they should. But maybe there are places in town, perhaps along the main roads, where you build some of those things, you know, a a percentage, maybe five homes out of a hundred or something like that, that are made to be professional offices. So you might have a pediatrician or a dentist or a accountant or a lawyer in the in the neighborhood. You don't have to travel to him. He's there. If they are planned that way, the lots would be bigger. There would be, they would accommodate parking. There would be better buffering and things like that because there's, there's a big difference between converting something and planning for it in the beginning. Um, so that's one of the things I I think we ought to talk about. Multi-generational living is now more common than it was when this master plan was adopted. That's something I think we have to talk about. Um, I saw the plan talks about cluster zoning. I don't think we we talked about that for years. I don't know that we really got into that. That's something I think it's time has come. I think we we ought to take a look at that. Um, I actually think that we ought to reexamine the recently adopted redevelopment plan for the old Amboy Center. I've seen that plan. It's uh same old, same old. It's not as creative as I think we ought to have at the entrance to town. When people come over the bridge, they ought to look and they ought to see that and they they ought to know that whatever is there represents Sarah. That's what we want people to think of when they come into Sarah. We don't want them to think of the old abandoned movie theater or Club Thirty-Five. But I think maybe we should take a look at that and see if that can be done more creatively. That plan was developed by the engineer. Um, maybe a planner should take another look at it. Planners and engineers um have a different perspective. They work together, but they they have a different focus and a different well, a different focus. And 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 I think that maybe you ought to take a look at that.
Chair, sorry to interrupt, but do you believe we have the jurisdiction to do that? Or does it have to go back to redevelopment?
Uh, I think, well, I'm gonna talk about that a little bit later because uh, yeah, I I will talk about that. I think you do. I think you should put it in the master plan. I think then those things should be substantially consistent with, those things meaning redevelopment plans, should be substantially consistent with the master plan, just like the zoning ordinance is supposed to be substantially consistent with the master plan. Um, and I I have some issues with recent redevelopment plans. And I really think they stem from the fact that Sarah, which arguably is the most important board in the town, doesn't have a planner. There's a lot of excellent professionals, but they don't have a planner. And I and I think they can uh benefit by that. Um, you talked about roads. You talked about traffic. And all of the things that were mentioned, all of these bottlenecks, they are all pre-warehouse. They are all before four million square feet of warehousing, four million square feet plus of warehousing is added. So I think uh, I think we have to take a look at that. I think that um you ought to take a look at having a complete capital improvement plan. I think that's very important uh for the facilities. You know, we we we, there was talk last year or the year before about, there's been talk for a long time about community center. I won't tell you how the tentative location for the community center was chosen because those who are professional planners might have an aneurysm. Um, but it didn't have anything to do with planning. It had to do with the other people, politics. That's not the way to plan these things. And so I think, I think it, you know, go to a place like Woodbridge um where where my kids live. The community center there is amazing. Um, we deserve something like that in Saro, but we deserve to have it planned well. And I think maybe that ought to be a part of the, of a complete capital improvement plan. You know, previous master plans, you talked, Mr. Chairman, about traffic and circulation, things like that. Previous master plans call for such things as the Main Street Extension. And that has done wonderful things for the town. It has relieved traffic. All those, we get just under two million dollars a year from the taxes on the warehouses on the Main Street Extension. We don't see any of that traffic in town. Those trucks go out quickly to nine thirty-five, two eighty-seven in the turnpike. We don't see that traffic in town. So that was a wonderful thing. That was part of the master plan. The Main Street bypass has been part of the master plan for I don't know how many years. Um, it, nothing has been done um in the last twenty years. Um, it kind of came to a halt, actually, under under Mayor O'Brien. That road needs to be completed. I think we have to focus on that um with the traffic, the additional traffic that's going to be on the Main Street. We need that Main Street bypass. The master plan called for a connector road between Journey Mill Road and Cheesequake Road. Now, when Arsenal was built, there was talk about that. In fact, I came up to this podium at that August meeting two years ago and talked about that. The engineer said that, not the engineer at the meeting, but the borough engineer said that road would be cost prohibitive. Um, but I understand it may take place during another phase if more phases of those warehouses are built. I'll tell you this, I don't think there are going to be more phases of that warehouse built. I think when those warehouses are built, I don't think there's a a person on the planning board or the council who would have the guts to approve more warehouses once we see what those are going to wreak uh uh on the borough. Um, so I think we have to talk about that connector road that is in there. Lakeview Drive was supposed to be extended um under a previous master plan. When the Mako warehouses were built, the planning board did not require that extension. There needs to be another, that would be a north-south connection between Main Street and Washington Road. Especially when the, is that right, north-south? The two things I couldn't do when I was chairman of the planning board, I couldn't follow the map and I couldn't tell directions. But I think it's a north-south connected between Washington Road and and um and Main Street. I thi- I think that has to be done. The chairman talked about sidewalks. We need sidewalks. Uh, you know, at the last council meeting, they approved a close to eight hundred thousand dollar state grant because folks were are walking from Whining Wood over to that little strip mall on the corner where the Dunkin' Donuts is. And it's a safety hazard. They have to walk into the road because there are no sidewalks. Um, so they're, we're gonna build a, it's like seven hundred and eighty thousand dollar pedestrian walkway, right, Jay?
The borough made an application for.
That's what we made an application for. That, that's what we would like to do.
It's a pedestrian.
If, if we talk about doing sidewalks in the beginning, make that the builder's application. Taxpayers won't have to pay for that. And it it's a safety issue, especially, I mean, you talked about Laurel Park, Mr. Chairman. You know, when folks, folks are going to be cutting through Laurel Park uh to avoid the traffic that Arsenal is going to bring. So I think that that is important. The elephant in the room is warehouses. I think in the last couple of years, uh, nothing has generated more angst or public conversation than the two four million, four million square feet that will be built as a result of those um uh warehouses. So, you know, the 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 Office of State Planning, and this is not a problem that's particular to Sarah. Warehouses are overtaking the state. And the Office of State Planning and their wisdom has put out some excellent guidance on warehouses. I would suggest you all take a look at that. See if maybe there's some areas where there's still appropriate. I, to this day, I will tell you, putting warehouses on the Main Street Extension was a wonderful thing for the town. I'm very proud of that. It employs some people. It doesn't create any traffic on the inner roadway network and produces a lot in taxes. And that's, and and a lot of people use, I use that road every day. A lot of people use that. That's a good thing. So maybe there's some places where they are appropriate. There are some places where they definitely are not appropriate. And the Office of State Planning has some excellent guidance. And I I would ask that you look at that and incorporate that into the plan. Maybe you ought to um take a look at Bailey Park and see what ought to go there. That's uh, I went there the other day. I was surprised at how close Arsenal was to that. And of course, immediately adjacent to that are residential units. Um, COA was talked about. I made these notes before I saw this. Um, and it's referenced in here. Uh, we brought Susan back because we were in the midst of a COA battle that was caused by actually twenty years of ignoring the law. There was a point in time when we were in compliance. We met our obligation and then administrations changed. And for twenty years, we um we violated the law, whether it was willful or out of ignorance, but we violated the law. We 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 thumbed our nose at Judge Hurley's decision on certain things, and that's the reason we were sued. And the result of that suit is that there will be thousands of apartments built and it will cost the town millions of dollars, thousands of market-rate apartments. I have no issue with the seven hundred and eighty-five affordable housing. That's a good thing. That's public policy of the state. We ought to be doing that. That we are forced to do all the market-rate apartments, which are going to choke us um is a result of our not complying with the law. So I think it is important that going forward, we have to make sure that that never ever happens again. Because we like to say, oh, the judge imposed it, bad people sued us. They sued us because we violated the law. You can't do that. So I think that has to be addressed. Um, you know, years ago, we were an agrarian society, then manufacturing society, then turned into a service economy. I think our future land use plan has to address that. I don't know what it talks about here with respect to retail. I know Riverton is very heavy on retail. The other day, Monday, I went to Nordstrom's to buy these, buy these cool sneakers. And the salesman said to me, you know, if you get them online, and and I was the only person in the store in Nordstrom's. You know, there was a time when I wore a suit and tie. I'd be in Nordstrom's once a week buying things. I was the only person in the store. And the salesman said to me, you know, if you buy these online, they won't be a hundred and sixty-five dollars. They're a hundred and twelve dollars. So I pulled out my iPhone and ordered them online. And I went and picked them up today. That's the future of retail. Um, so I think our master plan has to address that. I think uh there should be community impact statements, community uh facilities impact. And this is not so much the master plan, but it but it's related to it, population impact and traffic impact. I thought of something after the ars, after the, after the seventy-five hundred trees were torn down and people started to talk about skunks and deer and other wildlife migrating over to their yards. I'd never seen this before in a master plan or zoning ordinance, but maybe, maybe there has to be a plan that addresses or that has builders address wildlife that is displaced by development. I've never seen that before. Um, of course, you know, until we came up with it, I never saw tree ban ordinance before either. But we came up with that idea and it became a model and it's been implemented in a lot of places. Maybe we should do that here. I also think um the, and and I think this, I think we have very talented folks involved with it. So if, and and they have connections to other resources. So if there can be such a thing as a, as a. So if there can be such a thing as a, as a wildlife displacement element, I am sure that this planning firm is the firm to do it. I think the Environmental Commission, which as we know is an adjunct of the planning function and the Shain Tree Commission need to be involved in the development of, if not the master plan, at least the land use plan or the, or the zoning ordinance that's going to come through it. You talked about, when I mentioned the redevelopment plan, you, you talked about, do we have the right to do that? I appreciate that the board and the planner is going through the time, effort and energy and expertise to come up with this master plan. And I become disheartened when I see another board, Sarah, that does not have a planner thwart some of those things and come up with some plans that are different. You know, redevelopment plan, I, I call them the on planning board because a redevelopment plan, there's some excellent redevelopment plans. Some of the redevelopment plans are less or more lapsed than our zoning ordinance. They allow developers to do more things than our zoning ordinance would do. They, they have smaller buffers and things like that than our existing zoning ordinance would do. So I, I'm, I'm concerned whenever I see that. And of course, you know, the redevelopment plans almost always lead to a pilot or the application for a pilot, which is, which is another concern. And I have said before, and, and I looked at my notes, I wrote this down. And I said this once before, at least once before, a first-class planning firm is necessary for good land use planning. You, the council and the zoning board each have a plan in addition to an engineer and an attorney, but the board that has the greatest impact on our town, Sarah, has no plan. And I always used to tell people to remember the seven Ps, proper preparation and planning prevent blank poor performance. And engineering is important, but a perfectly engineered, poorly planned project makes no sense. So if, and I don't know what jurisdiction you have, certainly you can, I think, recommend that Sarah have a planner. And I think at the very least, you should explore ways to ensure that, that Sarah doesn't circumvent your good work and what they do, do complies with the master plan. One other thing is the, and I saw, I think I saw it in this report for, I can't tell you how many. Mayor McCormick, when he was the mayor, talked about this consistently. The 40 acres adjacent to Kennedy Park. I'm not sure how that is zoned right now, but we want to take, it's the center of town. It's the geographic center of town. It's the spiritual center of town. It's adjacent to Kennedy Park. You know, a few years ago, as a result of the COA deal, we were able to get four more acres to add to Kennedy Park. There's still that 40, Mayor McCormick always called it the 40 acres. I think it's actually 43 acres. Whatever was done there really ought to complement Kennedy Park. Even if it is not a public use, is at least a private use that is, that is substantially consistent with the park, which is the center of town. You know, one thing we know about land is they ain't making it anymore. So when that is developed and if that becomes a warehouse or a factory or something else, it's no longer usable as a recreation or, or cultural facility. So I, I think that that ought to be addressed very soon. So I thank you. I know I took a long time. I apologize for that. I thank you for your service, your ideas, your time, your comments. There is one other thing that I would like to ask, not related to this. As we know, the land use law provides that government entities have to come before the planning board with a capital project before the expenditure of any money. I have sent the Board of Education and Dr. Labby a number of notes telling them that, I think it's 4055B-31 requires that. Dr. Labby has this, this idea, no, they're, they're above that, that they answer to the Dia, Department of Education. However, he said to me, if we are invited, we will come. So now they are proposing to put a, he doesn't like when I call it bus depot, so a transportation center on Cheesequake Road. I sent him the traffic report for Arsenal so that he would know what he was getting into when they picked that site. They're doing that in cooperation with the Borough. That is actually Borough property, I believe, and there'll be some sort of arrangement. So certainly, the planning board has the right, and I think the obligation, to ask them to come in. Otherwise, there will be no public hearing. The public will not know what's going to go there. The public will not know how many trees are going to be knocked down. The folks in Laurel Park will not know if they're going to be light shining in their homes or loudspeakers or anything like that. And we won't know. You know, how are those buses going to mesh with the, I, I think the traffic report said during peak period, there would be one truck to trailer a minute exiting onto Cheesequake Road. You know, school buses are supposed to run on schedules. How are they going to mesh? So I mentioned this at a council meeting. The council said, yeah, they felt the planning board should invite the Board of Education to make a presentation. I remember Dr. Parnell came and made presentations to the planning board when they, when they added on to the high school. So it's not unprecedented. Has the planning board invited the Board of Education to make a presentation?
Robinson, I, I believe we don't share the same view as the Board of Ed does. And they are required to at least present their plan before this board for recommendation. And I believe they are going to do that, right Jay?
That's correct. They've made aware of the concerns and the requirements and they've agreed-
The microphone, please.
They are aware of the requirements. They have agreed to appear before the board. They're currently preparing their plans so that they're not to a point where they're ready to appear, but they know that they're required to appear.
So there's, there's no date?
No date as of yet, Mr. Robinson.
And, and the whole reason that this is done, what the law says is before the expenditure of any money, they have to come and present these plans so that you can see if it's consistent with the master plan. And you can't, you can't deny it, but you can make recommendations. And I'll tell you, and I know I'm taking a lot of time, but I'll tell you something that I think is valuable. Years ago, councilman Hagg had a plan to turn the DPW garage into the first aid squad. And the council was proceeding with that. And I think there were even plans that were drawn up. And I looked at that and I said, whoa, wait a minute. You got a park here. There are always folks here. You have people racing in to respond. You have ambulances racing out adjacent to this park. And this facility over here is actually closer to South River than it is to most of the area that the Saro emergency squad serviced. So we told the governing body that they had to come before us and present those plans. And they came, they did that willingly. John McCormick was the mayor there and he liked to comply with the law, kept us out of trouble. It was a good practice. And based on that, they decided that this is not where the first aid squad should go. They decided that the first aid squad should be somewhere closer to the center of town. And based on that, Mayor McCormick talked to DuPont, which transferred. I don't know if they donated or sold or whatever, but anyway, transferred the land. And then Mayor Zagata and Councilman Osheski took it to fruition. And that's a much better spot over there. And that is a direct result of our doing what the law required. And for the same reason, that's the same reasoning that goes into my thinking that the Board of, and of course, it has the added benefit of being legal, that the Board of Education should come and present this plan. So I, I, I appreciate that you reached out to them. I appreciate that, that you agree that that ought to be done. And, and I hope, I hope it will be beneficial and, and helpful to everybody, you know? We don't operate in a vacuum and nobody has a monopoly on wisdom. And I learned over the years, you get a lot of good comments from folks in the audience. Some tend to ramble on like me, but, but some have very concise thoughtful things. And, and that's a good thing. So I thank you very much for your time and I thank you for what you're doing. And I certainly thank the planner for what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Robinson. Sir?
I'm Joe, welcome.
Yes, hi, welcome back.
My address is 167 Main Street.
Welcome back.
I was jotting a few comments down, a few things to comment on. And, and to point out, the Sandy Storm, when I saw that the 100-plus number in there, I said, well, why not put the right number in there, which is 149? And I, and I wanted to point out too, that I have statistics for $32 million in acquisitions according to E. A million dollars of taxes have to be made up because of the tax loss to that. There's other things that I have. So if anybody had any report that needs some of these answers in there, I just might have them in a short time, put them together. The Jimmy Robinson, tough act to follow too, but he talked about the warehouses, 4 million square feet. We have over 5,000 apartments along those kind of lines. You know, so when you say a million square feet of that or a thousand of those, 5,000 apartments is quite a few. And, and we have some more still on the drawing board because it seems like one of, one of the things in your plan was the promoting family ownership, house, real estate ownership. If they're building apartments, you can't do that. And I have another question, a concern on that, I'll go over in a bit. But I also wanted to say the solar panels that you wrote up, Mr. Chairman. About two years ago, I became aware that they were putting them on roofs of the warehouses. And I went around town trying to get information on it and a few, a few, and query the owners. And the wind-up is, I also looked at the computer, which is a great hand in trying to find things. The problem is, one of the websites I was on had, I believe, 11 power generating things, I think they're called, including solar fields. The problem with that is for them wrong. They had several in position to be Sony megawatt per capita or whatever they were trying to prove, but they had a problem with that. So I went in, I was going to try to tell them that they were wrong and to clean it up. That process is, is mind-blowing. So you've got to take it with a grain of salt. But I do have some numbers on, on, on those kinds of things. The the, in 1990-ish time period, 95 maybe, Bernie Bailey was doing some information that he needed to say. We're infilling lots and increases his workload for his men. And he wanted to convince the council that he needed some more men and women. And so he asked me if I could help him with what the new construction was. I have notes from 1995 to, to present day, what was constructed in town. Now, the, Donald Roberts came in and asked a question a year, a year or two ago, a single family ownership. And of course, that's a good thing to do. But we're not building any of those anymore. And, and the graph that I did, I think I shared that with Jay. It's a little hard to see, but what it was is in the, in the 26 years that this thing was going, the first half had enough singles, townhouses, condos and apartments were on the lower side. When you get into the second half, apartments are on the higher side. The singles went down to zero and the condo townhouses were zero for a while. But with Ryan Holmes selling some of the units that Catherine would build in Section 6 of the Mara, there's at least one summer sale on it. But, you know, you, you basically, if you're in a single market, you have to go through existing ones. There's just doesn't anything else. And the the last thing I want to say is that the things that we have and why I got myself into the middle of those things because we're going to have a revaluation eventually. The last time we had one was in 1993 and, and it, that's a while ago. Middlesex County has a tough sledding when it gets to do those. It costs us $600,000 change, not fully attached by preparation, 1980, 1993, when we had a thing done last time. So it's going to be a few bucks. All right. And I want to do it right and I want to leave on Borough next stop. That's the current plan. So getting into the things that we need to have to do a good revaluation. We need to have a plan, not just a reexamination as Susan was talking about, but the other things she was talking about. We need those things. We need that, that zoning map updated. We need the suggestions that she's going to come up with as far as, you know, doing things here and doing things there. And I'd like to contribute to that process if I can. One of the things with the information in my office is, and Jimmy Robinson knows this so well, I can't just give you an answer. A lot of them I have to go back and look at something because I was keeping everything in my head years ago. And then a couple of years in the good age, I get older. So I'm trying, you know, put things down and, and help out where I can. So some of the things that made me amazed with the numbers may amaze everybody. You know, I, I, most of the time I have stuff from 1980, which I call modern ever, up till today, as far as taxes paid what on the average was and things along those lines. So there's a lot of things and that's why I wanted to make it available. I was, I was thankful for Susan to be receptive to that and help out with the things. So thank you very much, Trithan, and have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Councilman Roberts? Welcome.
Thank you. I'm glad I went last because a lot of my questions did get answered. And I'm here more to learn more about the process, so I appreciate that. This is the first time I'll be doing a master plan. Apparently you have to go through me to get it through. So great understanding about where the process is and how it goes through. I did have a question though about the public outreach and how it impacted the study. I did see the answers to them and as you said, a lot of it had to do with traffic overcrowding. So how much does that impact the master plan and what we actually put into it? So I, I don't know if I could just ask questions and get answers or just put it out there.
That's fine by us. If you're comfortable with that, Susan, go ahead. You want the microphone?
I guess I need the microphone.
Yes.
Okay, I'll take the microphone. Hi, good to see you.
Nice to see you.
It does, first of all, we're great believers in transparency and having as much public input as possible. So the concept, there are a bunch of different ways of doing public input, but it was determined the best was a survey here. Now, what we try to do with the land use plan is make it more of an issues-focused land use plan. So that's the next step. That's the next step. Grasping the, the whole process. Yes. So this kind of sets it up. And it did in a way determine, you know, it was determined that yes, you need a new land use plan element, but also a circulation plan element. And that's, okay, and that's traffic. That's pedestrian, pedestrian, auto, vehicular, everything. So, so to the extent that that kind of drove what broad-based recommendations were. It helped, it helped a lot and it will continue to help in terms of the next phase.
Okay. So I'm going to grasp all the new phases and I, thank you. I might have another question that goes here right now. That's okay. I'll sit down with this so that I can, I'm ready to jump off again. A couple of things Jim Robinson brought up that I had questions on from others had to do with how the master plan impacts change. I think you had covered that. It's the land use that is really going to impact. And I was just wondering how those two documents impact the development that we see going on. Does that, that was the little question, wasn't it?
You know, and, and Jim very, very astutely knows and talked about that in a way. So there's a lot of development that's been approved.
I, I know, I saw the list in the back of all we would, one which came by when I was in 10 years old.
Well, and, and there you go. So you haven't had the full impact of all the development, obviously. And you have, you know, on top of everything, you have the affordable housing. That is another question I was going to have. And there was nothing, I mean, you got what you got. I'll just leave it at that, but it's coming up soon again. It's like a Ponzi re. Well, there are a lot of ways of describing affordable housing and the co, well, it's not the co-process anymore, it's the court process.
Right.
So, you know, but everybody's going to be in that, everybody, every municipality is going to be in that position coming up in the next couple of years.
So I think one of the challenges is, how do we meet the requirements, but then also encourage ownership and building of personal wealth that our tax assessor had brought up as, as having changed so greatly?
Well, that's a very interesting challenge. Within a, within redevelopment is separate, but just under, and I don't mean to be playing lawyer.
Go right ahead. You're on TV, play one on TV.
But in terms of the municipal land use law, unless you're doing affordable housing or redevelopment, and there's a question about that, but that you can't establish, you can't demand tenure, you can't tell a developer that he has to do rental versus owner. Now, you can create incentives, but you can't, but generally, as you well know, the market kind of drives whatever happens. So that is a very specific provision in the municipal land use law, that you can't dictate tenure. So I understand that a lot of communities feel that owner occupied, try to promote owner occupied. There's never been a real answer to that, but it's, it's definitely a goal that makes sense. I'm sorry, I can't be more definitive.
And I'm sorry, I'm taking up all this, I'm, I'm just trying to learn and get a good foundation, because we do have to work together and make the best decisions as we go through. So that was, that plan, I did, all right, so we talked about that, I don't have as much as everyone else, but I did want to make sure I covered a couple of other things. The roads, Jim, I covered Hardle, was a question I had received, as well as Lakeview. So that was covered, thank you. I do like what's encouraged, so we're still encouraging much of what's in the plan, we're encouraging owner occupancy, it's in here, discourage encroachment, commercial, emphasize vigorous code enforcement, encourage improved access to Raritan River, all this is really good stuff. I think one of the things, I saw a lot of, was the EV. There's a lot of that in here. We have no choice, the state is mandating, we must do this. To what extent?
That's a question, that's a question as to there's, there are model ordinances that are proposed, and you have to look at it in terms of how, there's certain requirements, but then you can go over and above, or there's certain options of how you do that. And there's, and interestingly, I just had a conversation with someone about affordable housing and EV, and whether that's just more of a cluster of things to require that.
And I'm assuming that the EV requirements, the Borough is going to have to pay for, the state is not going to gift us these stations. Well, yes, probably. Okay. So I think, yeah, that was a whole lot of pages on EVs, and just a question on the cannabis, we had prohibited all six types of cannabis that stays in the plan that will carry over, or does that have to be renewed? Yeah, all right. And a lot of climate change stuff in here, that we're mandated to do, and will have to pay for. Okay. I just thought the, the rental, that was on page 28. Jim, you're a real estate agent, you do mostly commercial now, right? You're a real estate agent, right? You do mostly commercial now? Okay, but it just seems kind of low, with what the real estate has been lately.
Oh, the rent, the rent. That, that, just so you know, that is data from basically census, or the American survey information, so it's from 2020, at least what I think you're looking at, correct? And, and so that's not, that's not information that we generated, that comes from a supposedly very reasonable source.
All right, and I think the, the theme of the plan that is still in here, as well as what the, the survey questions came back with, is traffic, population, and overcrowding is what we say are important to us to do, and we are diametrically opposed with what we have to do. All right, thank you for indulging me, I appreciate it. I probably asked a lot of questions, so that I'm informed, so I appreciate the time.
You're welcome, thank you, Councilwoman.
Welcome to public to online.
Anyone online who'd like to make a comment?
Raise your hand, hit star nine to raise your hand.
We have a motion to.
Motion close public?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Listen, I had just a few questions based upon the comments that were brought, one question I had was, in terms of overcrowding schools, is that something you look at, or is that the Board of Ed's function?
That is really the Board of Ed function of, yeah, let me take that. Sometimes it's in a community facility, but they have to do their own population projections, student enrollment projections and such, and, and I absolutely agree with this board, and what, what Jim said about the fact that they should be coming to you with their plans, because you have to coordinate, and you, you should know what kind of projections and what kind of capital improvements they are proposing. So it's always interesting to see what they come up with their projections.
Yeah, because I know that there's some development that's, that we, you know, again, result of litigation with the Borough, redevelopment, et cetera, and there's a concern about overcrowding of the schools, and I didn't know if it was the planning board's purview to evaluate that, select a potential area for another school, or the need, but that's all Board of Ed.
Well, that's an interesting piece too. Oftentimes, when you do a full comprehensive master plan, there's a community facilities element to that, and that can include schools. And if there is, if you coordinate, when, when we do comprehensive master plans with the community facility element, we bring in stakeholders, and one of those, obviously, is the Board of Ed. So if there is a, if everybody decides that there should be some recommendation about a location for a school, or there's a need, it coordinates with what they're doing for their facilities master plan. And so there is, there can be a relationship and something in there, but that is not what is being, your 2013, I think, had a, had a facility, community facilities plan, it was not recommended that a community facilities element be done for this one.
So we're not going to address it on this one?
No, no.
Is that something we could change if we wanted to though?
You could recommend, if, if this board wants to suggest, again, what we recommended was land use plan elements, circulation plan, and zoning changes, right? Comprehensive master plan, you know, map and zoning. If you wanted to add community facilities element to this, we can do that. That's why we're here, so that when you're ready to adopt this, you know, it has what you want in it. So certainly, we could add that, if that's what the consensus of this board is.
Okay. In terms of evaluating the current redevelopment plans versus the master plan, or the master plan reexamination, is that something that you would normally do, or you wouldn't?
I, I understand that recommendation, and maybe you want to say, you know, the older one should be evaluated, reevaluated, or looked at. And maybe that's something that the governing body wants to fund, per se, because that is a fairly significant undertaking.
Beyond the scope of what you'd normally do for a master plan?
Beyond the scope of what a land use plan element would be, if it's, you have a number of master, of redevelopment plans, so that's a fairly heavy duty.
If we focused on one, say, the Amboy Cinema property, would that, would that be something that you could?
At, at least there could be some general recommendations.
One other issue, I don't know if it, if it is an issue or not, I really don't know where all the cell phone towers are in this borough, but I, I don't know if there's any problems or gaps and so, people are working from home, a lot of people work on 5G as opposed to Wi-Fi. I know we got Verizon in, so at least we have another, at least some of us have another, you know, internet service provider besides Optimum, but I know T-Mobile is putting in 5G home internet. Is there an evaluation of the cell coverage of the borough?
No, normally that is not done. Normally, it's the private carriers that determine where there are gaps, and you'll see them either in front of this board, or the zoning board, depending. I don't recall whether you have, I think you do, but that there's an ordinance that addresses, yeah, that's what I thought.
Okay, thank you very much, Susan. Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
So Chairman, I just want to follow up with the community facilities that Susan was talking about, I would like to make sure that we get that in.
I was going to make a, want to propose a motion?
Absolutely, I'd make that motion.
I'll second it. A roll call, not a roll call.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And the other issue regarding the Amboy Cinema property?
I'll make a motion for, for that as well.
Evaluation?
Evaluation for that, yes.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Well, the comment, Chairman, is if the planner is going to incorporate those in, can they get that done in the, for the next meeting? It may change your schedule, I would just ask Susan if, if that changes her timeframe.
No, no, it's perfectly fine, we would have done time to be on, on file for those.
That's all, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
They're putting more on your plan.
Appreciate it, that's not that, of course, I turn around to comment, to see, I'm saying, I'm sure, because she's the one that probably won't put that there, but yes.
And, and you know, our next meeting is May 17th, we're not having one the first, the first cycle, and right, yes. Okay, great. All right, so I think we're finished with this portion, and I think we need to, a motion to open up to the public on any other general issues, so, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Anyone from the public who would like to be heard? No one in person, anyone online?
Nope.
Motion to close? All in favor? Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn for the day?
What's my adjourn?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone, have a good evening. Thank you, thank you, everyone.